It's seven o'clock, so I will call the April 25th, 2022 meeting of the Hingham School Committee to order at 7:00 PM. And before we get going tonight, I just wanted to, by now, most of us have heard the news, but we were deeply saddened to lose Dr. Ed Schreier earlier this month. He's a longtime Hingham resident and a former school committee member, and he passed away on April 5th. He served for three years in the U.S. Navy Dental Corps and then spent 40 years as a pediatric dentist, serving countless South Shore students and adolescents. We all knew him. He was an active member of the school committee and a volunteer in town. He served as nine years on the Hingham School Committee, and he brought boundless energy and enthusiasm to the world. He was instrumental in the successful execution of the high school fields renovation, the new middle school building, and major capital planning as the chair of the long-range planning subcommittee. He was also deeply interested in education, serving as the chair of the Special Education Subcommittee and in this role, attending many CPAC meetings to try to understand the issues facing special education students and their families. He also served as a founding board member and school committee liaison to South Shore SNAP, which is the special needs athletic partnership. Additionally, he served as a member of the Foster School Building Committee and was instrumental in the preliminary planning for a new Foster Elementary School building. Most recently, he volunteered to serve on the School Department Master Plan Review Committee with the same enthusiasm and cheerful demeanor that he always demonstrated. So he was a tireless public servant, and he'll be missed. Our thoughts are with his wife Joyce and his family, including his two daughters, Rachel and Emily, their families, and his six grandchildren. And if you haven't seen it, the visiting hours will be held on Friday, May 6th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Downing Cottage Funeral Chapel in Hingham. And a memorial service will take place at 11:00 AM on Saturday, May 7th, at the Old Ship Church in town. Also, we heard from Keith German today, and the school department will participate with the town tradition of lowering the flags to half-mast on the day of the interment of elected officials and town employees. So we'll be doing that. And thank you, Gary and Katie Hartman, for connecting us. Yeah, great. Okay, so next we have the approval of minutes of the school committee held on March 21st, 2022. Does anybody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 21st school committee meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 4th, 2022.
I was not here for that meeting, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of April 4th, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Good, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No, I'm a aye as well. I read them and I reviewed the meeting, so I think I can still vote for them.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, number three is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we've set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts general laws, the responsibility of the school committee are to: one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to the comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with that being said, we have people in the audience tonight, and we are also live streaming on YouTube, so if anyone who is watching at home, you can type a question or comment in the chat, and NASA is monitoring that for us. So is there anyone here in the audience that has a question or a comment? Oh, okay. Anyone on YouTube? Okay, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few items to report on.
Town meeting is this Saturday, and we hope it doesn't rain, so we don't have to rely on a later date. But it looks like Saturday at 2:00, and I'm sure everyone in town is aware of that, but we'll be there. We've had a lot of activity in the school district this year. The next quarter, the next few weeks is the busiest time of the school year. We've had a great deal of activity in the school district, and I know we've put out letters to the community that we've had a number of really strong hires. And we have, you know, a principal at Foster, Matt Shifely, will be joining us, and we're really excited about his appointment. We have Jonathan Haas will be the principal at East Elementary. And Greg Lamoth, who was the interim this year, will assume the role of permanent principal for Plymouth River. We're really excited about that. And we want to thank all of the community members that participated in those search committees and all the work that it took to get that done, and people from our office to really support that. And in the days to come, we'll have an appointment for a school business administrator for the district, and we'll announce that when that is made available. But it just highlights that there's a lot of excitement for the future of the school district. We have some very strong, very, very strong candidates that want to come and work in Hingham and has an unbelievable reputation. And the people that I've met with that will be joining the school district are so excited to be part of the future. So I think it's really encouraging to see what has happened in the last few weeks, few months. And there's, like I said, there's so many activities that will be happening between now and the close of the school year. I know our seniors are excited about graduation, and we're excited to send them off to do great things, but we're really excited about that. That's all I have this evening to report. But again, like I, just for parents out there, you know, we got a lot of stuff going on, so bear with us in schools when the last few weeks, because there's just so many activities and things happening out in our schools. So thank you so much, and hopefully we'll have a great, powerful end of the school year. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know a whole lot. First day back from break, everyone is just sort of setting in that we're entering the last couple of weeks. And like you said, they will be very busy, but it will go fast. So the only, there is, if anyone out there happens to be free, on May 4th at 7:00, there's going to be a band concert at the Middle School at 7:00. And in terms of what we're doing, and we have our joint meeting coming up, provided the rest of the committee responds to the time scheduling, which we hope that will happen. And we are just going to be focusing on the sort of election process for our own committee starting this, the end of the school year. So that's really all.
Thank you. So 5.2 communications received by the superintendent. Do you have anything additional? Great, any other communications? Okay, not here either. Okay, so we discussed, hopefully everyone's okay with moving the items. 7.1 and 7.2, we have Chief Jones here to join us tonight. These are both MOUs with the, the first one is the MOU between the Hingham Public Schools and the Hingham Police Department. That's the first read. And then 7.2 is to discuss a letter of agreement between the Hingham Public Schools and the Police Department regarding HPD comfort animals on HBS property. So is everyone all right with moving those up? All right, Jen, do you want to?
Okay, so like I said, if you, heading back, you have the draft with the MOU. We're trying to find a place in the Hingham Public Schools. And our current MOU with the Police Department has been in existence since 2017, and it needed to be updated and to reflect changes within Mass General Law, specifically related to the role of the School Resource Officer. And then just over the last several months, the Subcommittee's been working on this, you know, the collaborative effort with Chief Jones and Dr. Mastis. I want to thank them both for, we've had many meetings on Zoom, got to know each other a little bit better. It was nice. And we worked off of the 2022 MOU template that was designed by the School Resource Officer Commission. And what was really important to the Subcommittee during this process was to capture what our current MOU currently has. And then I'm just going to go through, through this process. We went, we reviewed and clarified language under the following categories. So this is each category in the MOU. So we went over the mission statements, the goals and objectives of the SRO program. We went over the roles and responsibilities and the process for selecting School Resource Officers, as well as the annual review process. We went over the mechanisms to incorporate School Resource Officers and the school staff into the school environment. We went over the organizational structure of the School Resource Officer Program. We went through the training, how the training for School Resource Officers is going to be lined up in accordance with Mass General Law, because that has changed in the last couple of years. And then we also went over how the data collection and the reporting is going to go. And as I stated earlier, that the MOU is from 2017, and that is the agreement that we're currently working off of. And that agreement, once this new agreement is signed, then we would switch over to that one. But we're still currently working off of the 2017 MOU. And I'm just going to open it up to the, I guess, for questions or...
I think I would just add, I agree, it was a good process going through. And as we went through, we kind of noticed that we're already doing a lot of the things in there. It was kind of capturing the program as it exists right now. And yeah, and it was good, and thank you, Chief Jones, for providing the template to us as a jumping off point. I think it was a good discussion. Anyone have any questions or comments?
So, thank you.
Thank you for the work on this. It's good. I had a couple of questions and then a more of a process question. So this looks very, like, very much in line with the state guidelines that are in place for the MOUs between the Police Department and the schools. My only concern, and I understand as usual, feels like as usual, we're in unusual circumstances again this year, where we have an interim superintendent. And so this, I think, had the involvement of the Policy Subcommittee. And I know that in 2017, it was also done by the Policy Subcommittee. But, so I'm comfortable with working through this now as a school committee. I just am wanting to be sure that, because my read of Mass General Law is that this is an agreement between the superintendent and the chief of police. And so I just want to not insert ourselves into this in the future if that's not appropriate, right? Because I think that, but seeing that Gary's an interim, Dr. Adams hasn't started yet. We want to get this done. We're way out of date with the one that we have. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there, that next year to rethink about.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I, I appreciate that this time around, it's sort of, instead of trying to upset the apple cart or reinvent the wheel or whatever metaphor we want to use, it's more trying to capture what's happening now. Because I think there is a larger discussion to be had, but I know my day job is I work in Somerville, which has also gone through this process in a really awful way. Right now, in Somerville, the police won't go into the schools. There's a complete lack of trust between the schools and the police and a war between the school committee and the police. I think we need to avoid that in Hingham as much. And I think we need to be able to have a productive discussion that is respectful of the police, respectful of, you know, the schools, and respectful of the kids. So I really appreciate that. I have, I'm totally willing to, within the spirit of what Michelle said, pass this forward. I have more concerns that if we do this in a year, I'd really like to dive into it more. But I, you know, in the spirit of, I think, you know, we haven't, we're supposed to update this every year, and we haven't since 2017. I think we need to get this moving forward. Let's get a year. Let's get Dr. Adams to have a year under her belt. And so I think it makes sense to sort of give it a stamp of approval of what we're doing right now and move it forward. But I do want to kind of bookmark that I think there is room for it to have a larger, heartier discussion about it a year from now, when we're updating it every year.
Right, yeah. As you said, we have to update it every year.
Yeah, and I also just want to point that it would be agreed, it would be reviewed annually just prior to the start of the school year. That's in the document.
And again, just the focus being on maintaining a positive, healthy relationship between the schools and the police and being, you know, supportive of that relationship, just coming from someplace that did not do that. You know, I don't want people to hear me say, "Let's dive into this in a year," and hear that as warning shots. That's not, that's not what I mean, but...
Absolutely.
Yeah, and Tim, you're right on, because there, we had a good frank discussion with the chief about the way things have happened in the past with the, when kids are out of school too, and then how things are reported. But this also allows for feedback on the SROs, which the other agreement didn't. And so I think it's positive to review it every year and get the, and see how it's working. Because there are some changes to this document than the last one. And so let's, and let's see how the Police Department feels that it's working as well as the schools and parents and students even. Because I think it'll be productive for creating that positive relationship.
Yeah.
So I agree with that.
Yeah. We're just so fortunate to have a good working relationship with the Hingham Police Department.
Okay, Chief Jones, do you have anything to add? You don't have to, but it's up to you.
So thank you all very much. I appreciate all the work you did on this. And to Tim's point, we have a great relationship with the board and the school community as a whole. So I'm looking forward to continuing that. I know our SROs and our officers are. So just thank you all for the work you did. I'm really looking forward to the process. And I think the annual reviews are a great idea, Tim.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. With that being said...
Karen, I know I missed the session, but I did read the policy, the initial reading. May I just say a few words?
Sure.
I just want to thank the Policy Subcommittee for working on this and putting this together. Did a great job. As I had mentioned before, full support of having the SOR, you know, involved with the dog. Obviously, it does, you know, takes a lot of work to actually...
So we haven't gotten to the dog one yet?
Oh, that's not it?
This is the MOU.
I apologize.
Yeah, so we're getting there.
I apologize.
Do you have anything on the MOU that you wanted to?
Uh, no, yeah, it looks good.
Okay. All right, great.
Yep, there was a comment online.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yes.
So the town website has an incorrect link to tonight's school committee meeting. The link sends you to the meeting that took place on 4/4, just an FYI. I don't know if there's a way to fix that. All in FYI.
I'm not sure if, yeah, it links to the old...
The old meeting.
Old meeting. Is it the same address, though?
In the title now, in the 4/4 title, it says, "In the description..."
Okay. Oh, good, okay. So it's... Okay.
I'll write that in the response.
And bomb it out on our app.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for correcting that quickly. Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions on the MOU? Can I just ask, Gary, I don't know, had you, has Dr. Adams looked at this at all? I don't know if you...
You know, we haven't even talked about the MOU. We've talked about a million other things. But I would just add that, you know, the draft that was presented was very school-oriented. And I think it really looked at how there's a collaboration between the school and the department. So I will definitely share with Margaret the conversation and the intent to continue to build on the model. And this is the second step of many to go. Okay?
So this is also based on a template that is being used statewide.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So, yeah.
Of course, I know it's not, it's very similar to the template that's already open.
Yeah, it's not like our last one that was only Hingham, and she'd really have to understand. So, but I appreciate you asking about, Margaret, but I don't think it's as much of a leap as some other things that we've had in the past and we're coming into.
Agreed. So I will take a motion to approve the MOU.
That was a frustrating read.
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
Yeah.
Got ahead of myself there. Okay, well, in that case, we will put that on the next agenda. And so next at 7.2 is to discuss a letter of agreement regarding the comfort animal.
Agreement regarding the Hingham Police Department comfort animals in Hingham Public Schools. The Policy Subcommittee also worked with Chief Jones and Dr. Mastis to come up with this document to outline the presence of any comfort animals in all the school buildings while being under the supervision and control of a School Resource Officer. The agreement covers what the role of the comfort animal is and the appropriate training of the animal and the animal's schedule. The SRO shall act as the primary handler of any Hingham police animals that is on the school property. And also, an appointed Hingham Public School staff member will be appointed as the secondary handler. And all financial obligations will be the responsibility of the Hingham Police Department and/or the town of Hingham. And then written procedures will be developed by the superintendent or designees in collaboration with the SRO and their supervisors. And then these procedures are to ensure that the presence of any police, police comfort animal on school property is safe and positive for all. And then again, this also will be reviewed between the school committee, the superintendent, the principal, the handlers, and the police after six months, and then annually thereafter.
Thank you again for putting this together. And all the fabulous posts we've seen about Opry, the dog, on social media. He's got quite the PR team behind him. I love it. No, it's great to see him around town. And it's nice to see it being a community resource as well, not just for the schools. So I think that is great. And I know back in the fall, we talked about this. We had much discussion about it. I know since then, many people have done it, but I have as well talked to Mr. Swanson about it. Officer Ford and I talked a bit about it via email. And I've also talked to some of the students and staff that had initial reservations around it. But, you know, the dog is here, and it's fully trained now, and it's been out in the community. And I think there's some good work that can be done with the dog. And I think, actually, I want to commend Officer Ford, because I heard over the past several months that he's really done a great job in getting more outreach with students and staff members to get them comfortable and is, you know, really working on forging relationships, particularly with some of the folks in the schools who might not be so comfortable with a dog in the school. So I give him a lot of credit for doing that. And he seems very committed to this. So I do, I think it's, the draft letter agreement is good, and I like that it's a six-month sort of trial period to see how it goes and make sure there's not issues or that students don't feel comfortable with it. I have a little bit of my same argument, like, I'm not sure that this, I feel like a little bit, I don't know if the school committee should be involved. But I think definitely for the first year in particular, while we sort of, you know, push through and, you know, work out any kinks in the program and make sure it's an appropriate program, so. What I was thinking.
And I'll also just add that we also have our school committee policy, which is animals.
Right.
That also kind of aligns with this.
Yep.
And that being that's one of our policies.
And I kind of want to speak up just because I think there's been so much miscommunication about the last discussion that we had about it that was sort of, became a discussion about, oh, I guess the school committee hates both the CROs, the police, and dogs. None of which is true. So I don't know if we worded it inelegantly six months ago, but it really is about, if a dog is called a therapy dog, that dog is providing legal services to kids. And you imagine there are quite a few Hingham kids who, coming out of COVID, have anxiety disorders, have social-emotional disorders that need services in the school. The CROs cannot provide those services to the kids. We couldn't, we can't have a therapy dog in the school that's handled by CROs, because that's illegal. And really, we, you know, as I said in the last meeting, I'm not comfortable with a therapy dog. I'm comfortable with a comfort dog. I'd be even more comfortable with a mascot. That's what I would like to call the dog, because I think that's true to the spirit of what we wanted to do. We want to bring the community together and be sort of the Hingham mascot. But I'm good with comfort dog. But I just wanted, like, we like dogs. We like, we love the CROs, we're, you know.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's not what any of this was about.
I just want to add that the Subcommittee had the opportunity to meet with the Counseling Department. It was really great to hear all their feedback. And we, you know, we went over how, that this is a comfort animal, dog. And it wouldn't be therapeutic. It wouldn't be providing therapy. Once that child is receiving therapy, that the SRO would not cross the threshold of the realm with the dog. And for me personally, that made me feel a lot better.
They also really advocated for the dog, too. Which is, I think that made a big difference for me, absolutely.
Yeah, just to add on to what Michelle and Tim said, I was, I got to meet Opry and see Tom Ford with him. And at the time, I had one dog, and since have had a second dog. So I commend him on his ability to get the dog trained, because I'm not so lucky. I'm still working on that. But I, you know, I have great comfort, and that's why we got a second dog, because it does provide a lot of comfort. I like that it is being added and considered as a comfort dog versus a therapy dog, because I don't think it's an appropriate, I don't think the SRO is an appropriate person to be the handler of a therapy dog. I still would be concerned if, if the SRO is the handler, if there was an emergency that happened in the school and he happened to have the dog, what would then be the procedure around how to deal with the two? So would love to talk about that. But I also did talk with Rick Swanson, and my lived experience of loving dogs around is not necessarily everybody else's lived experience. So I had suggested that he maybe put a survey out to the students to see what they think. So I'm not sure if that's happened, but we might want to consider that as well.
And if, just to your point, if there was an incident and he was with the dog, I think that was one of the reasons that we put in the second handler that would be responsible, and that would be where the dog would go.
Yeah, and now the other part of what we thought about, too, is in here is a schedule for the dog, because we were very focused on what's the role of the dog itself. And that there's a lot of demand for the dog, and we didn't want to overwork the dog. But then we also wanted to make sure that when the SROs have responsibilities, that they're doing those responsibilities as well. You know, they have another job besides managing the comfort dog. And so that's also part of this plan and the procedures, that there's a real schedule that outlines what's happening to the dog as a primary, you know, focus. And then those procedures of who's handling it, when the SRO is doing, what the other things they're supposed to be doing. But we had a lot of discussion about, those were things we were thinking about that some of the counselors and some other people hadn't really considered, I would say. And so we were trying to come to putting all the issues on the table and trying to identify everything involved with this effort before people went too fast with it. And so I think it was a very, a good result in outlining this. And then having the review will only help, you know, perfect the process. So we covered a lot of different, we had good brainstorming and lots of different input of people to, you know, come to consensus of the issues. Yeah.
And I'm glad that we didn't come up with an exact schedule for that. It seems like a little oversteppy into procedure out of policy. I think the high school can handle that and be able to be flexible with the dog's schedule.
And also, we want to, we know the dog is going to go to other schools, not just the high school. And so then, how do you plan that out? That's why we have, you know, monthly, weekly, district-wide schedules, because it's a dog for the whole community. It's not just the high school.
That's right.
Hi, Carlos.
So I was, as I was saying earlier, I want to thank the Subcommittee for putting this agreement together with the Police Chief and the staff. To begin, I have been very supportive, and this is the right thing to do, so thanks to all. I was traumatized by a dog when I was 12. I was beaten. And I, believe me, I'm door knocking, and I'm so afraid of dogs. And as knows that, I have ran away from a dog several times, and he's so sweet. But let me tell you, I met Opry over the weekend, actually knocking on doors by coincidence. And, you know, he was, he was so approachable. And, you know, he was so approachable. It's like unbelievable and I didn't have to run this time. So I'm glad that this is happening. This will be a great thing for our students. Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos.
Yeah, I'm also, I'm also.
I already said that this has been taken care of, but I can take charge of another survey if we want. I thought it would be helpful. I mean, I don't know if that's something we actually need or want, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, then, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking that actually, we definitely would want to hear back from students and staff about their experiences. For you.
Do you find sticking around next year for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
What do you think, Elijah, if you don't mind you putting on your spot? What do you, generally, what would you think the?
The report.
Yeah, like generally, what would the students feel about having a dog?
Well, I'm, to make it sort of general, I think it would actually be well received. I mean, if, and I know it's different than Taco, but if, if Taco was any indication, then I think it would. I mean, I'm sure there are several people who have similar phobias of dogs, but I think generally it would be a very positive response. But I haven't really had the time to test that theory yet.
But it's a good point.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great idea to do it around the six-month review too. Okay, so this is the first read, so we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Oh, sorry. Could you, could you come to the microphone?
Sure.
And just give us your name and address, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Margaret McAlvin, sixteen oh five Tucker's in Hingham Woods. So I'm new to these meetings fairly much. So just two questions around this. What's, who was the dog supposed to comfort and why? And is this dog going to be walking the hallways and taking up the time of a police officer? I mean, just how is this going to work? So primarily, who is this going to comfort and why? That's all. Thank you.
Somebody in the meeting with the counselors described it as an environmental tool. So it's the students, the staff, it's something that they've had some experience with a volunteer coming into the building with a therapy dog. And it's kind of, it's helped people calm down. I've been able to, I think in some cases, de-escalate situations. Sometimes if somebody's just having a hard time, though, just having the dog in the building is helpful for, for students and staff members too. They all seem to feel like it was, it was helpful as far as like. Yep. Yep. Yeah, do you want to, yes, thank you.
Thank you, great question. So the resource officer would be the primary handler of the dog. He would have Opry with him around the school. But like the committee mentioned, there would be a schedule, so he won't be with him all the time. There's a secondary handler that can take the dog if he has other duties or responsibilities or has to attend to something. And he'll also be visiting the other schools. So they'll be swapping off with the other SROs and covering each other while he brings Opry to the other schools. So it's a, it's a community tool, build relationships between the students, staff and the department and our officers. So that's, that's the main goal for us, is to, is to build positive relationships with students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll put that on the agenda for the next, is there anything, sorry, is there anything on YouTube, Nessa?
Nope.
Okay, great. So in that case, we will put that on our next agenda and thank you so much for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay if you want. Next, we are, we're going to go back to unfinished business, six point one, to discuss the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget and to act as appropriate. Nessa, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, we gave an update at our last meeting about the budget and where we are. We had approved a budget while we were going through the cycle. And there have been different things that have happened that John Ferris had highlighted. Primarily retirements that are helping us to fund some of the things that the administration wanted. So I had proposed that we possibly revoke our budget so that we could be in line with advisory and the select board. And then are we also talking about the tennis courts?
Uh, yep, that's the next.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, so yeah, that was the proposal.
Okay. Does anyone have any discussion? We talked about it a bit at the last meeting, but. You know, the information that John's given us with the retirements, I think it's the wise choice to go.
I think it sends a good message to be in agreement with AdCom and the select board, if we are in fact in agreement with them, which we are.
It's so close.
Yeah. Right.
Inches really of a budget request, the differential, so I would agree. Yeah, exactly.
The inches that spawn a hundred thousand questions.
But yeah, no, I would, I would agree. I think it's a good message to send you going into town meeting.
I, I agree with taking another vote, but I just encourage the committee that after-town meeting and once we know the true number of what we're working with, that we itemize to the community what will be in that new budget. So that the community knows what was in, what was out and all of that detail again of what we have been presenting for so long. Because that's, you know, our obligation of transparency and communicating and for moving forward for next year.
Well, when we, you would put something in. We'd add like an addendum to the warrant, right? Can we include it in there?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it is included in there too. Yeah, I put together a draft and we can tweak it because we'll put it, we'll send it to the select board's office and include it in the warrant for town meeting. So depending on what everyone thinks tonight. And I agree, as long as we can fund those very necessary positions that were outlined by the administration and it sounds like we can and do it with the funds we have, absolutely. I think it's, we should be in agreement with AdCom and the select board, so. So do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to amend or revoke our budget number to mirror the AdCom recommendation of sixty-one million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and three dollars.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Six point two is to discuss the allocation of some from the athletic revolving account fund towards a possible renovation of the Hingham High School tennis courts and to act as appropriate. Take this one too? Yep.
So as we were talking in our finance subcommittee and as we updated you at the last meeting, we have a policy on what we do with revolving funds, how we use the funds and what we like to have at the end of the year. So with the pandemic, we got monies from the government, which was a great way to use our funds. We did not want to use taxpayer funds. And so those revolving funds ended up with a higher balance than what they normally are. So the finance subcommittee was proposing to apply some of the excess from the athletic fees to the tennis court warrant.
And it was three hundred thousand?
It was three hundred thousand, sorry.
And it's currently just low to four hundred.
Yes. Yeah, the four hundred is the, what is being used for operating next year. So typically, the athletic fees funds some of the operating expenses and what is in the budget for next year is four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's being used from athletic fees to fund the athletic department.
Any further thoughts or discussion on this?
Seems appropriate to use the athletic revolving account to, for athletics.
Right.
That's what people paid the money for.
Yeah, exactly. And so this will reduce the ask at town meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
To, I think, five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars instead of eight hundred and twenty-four. So, so yeah. That's a good.
There's that, the name of the account, there's also that other.
Field use.
Field use account that we also have funds in for. If we have other expenses down the line for big projects.
And we've earmarked some of the money in the athletic fund, I believe, and potential of the field for, we know we're going to have to redo the turf field soon, pretty soon. So that's another way we can kind of help out the taxpayers. So less money do we have to borrow or take from fund balance or wherever that's coming from, so. Okay, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to apply three hundred thousand dollars of the athletic fee revolving fund to help fund the Hingham High School tennis courts.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Six point three is to discuss the twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar and act as appropriate. Are we ready to discuss that or do we need to?
I don't think we are.
Okay.
I think we have some items to clear up with the HEA.
Okay. All right, so we'll table this for now.
Yeah. But what I can do is get the committee information relative to their involvement. And perhaps, if necessary, maybe have a quick meeting to discuss it. And, because I know people are waiting for dates and things of that nature. Typically, in a school district, we get, I mean, Sherry's been getting calls for a couple of months now on when's the last day of school next year and vacation days and all that. So I think it's important that we try to get that out.
Definitely. And if we could even just get out the first day of school, the last day of school breaks, things like that, people, community wants to know, that would be good. Okay. Six point four is a business director update. Do you have anything other than?
Yeah, you know, we'll be able to provide more information as the week goes forward. But I think we're moving closer to finalizing that process.
Great. Strategic plan update?
Yeah, we have our next meeting this Thursday. It'll be, hopefully, we can use this space, a little bit bigger space. So Sherry's going to work on that in the next day. But we're excited because we're in subgroups doing some data review and we'll review the findings of those groups this week. But it's, it's an engaging process. I've enjoyed it so far.
On this, the committee too, and it's just a, there's just so much data to go through and it's really, it's exciting. Okay, six point six is to discuss proposed amendments to HBS policy section D. This is our second read, so we can act as appropriate and vote if we're ready to do that. Jen, do you want to take this third?
At that last meeting, we went over section D and there was one thing that I wanted to propose to the committee under section fiscal accounting and reporting, where it states the school committee will receive periodic financial statements from the superintendent. I'm sorry. So it's fiscal accounting and reporting. I think it's the third from the.
It's DI.
DI, third from the last. Sorry, where do I find it?
My computer wasn't connecting to Wi-Fi, so I'm looking over your shoulder.
So we could pass it around. Here it is. I have it here if anyone wants to look at it.
No, I, I got my alphabet in my hand.
So where it says the school committee will receive periodic financial statements from the superintendent showing the financial condition of the district, I propose that we change periodic to quarterly. Or possibly minimum of quarterly or one or the other.
Yeah. Any thoughts on that?
Opry, out of minimum?
Yeah, I'd say out of minimum, quarterly.
How extensive would that be to prepare? Just.
John's not here, but.
Right. Like are we, have we just, you know, ruined the new business director's life?
I know. Well, I did, I had a chance to look at what other districts do and it's actually, it's, other districts do quarterly reports. Some, some of them do one in, a big one in December.
And maybe, this is a question for, is there CPA in the house? I know one, but do you know one? Is it, is financial statements? I feel like when I refer to financial statements at work, it is a compiled or audited or reviewed, like a statement of accounting versus a financial report.
No, you can have financial statements without being reviewed or audited.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know if we wanted to change that to be financial reports every quarter versus statements, but if that's not sort of a technical term, okay.
I can add that I, many years ago, requested quarterly reports and I got outvoted, so I'm fine with doing this. But one of the reasons it was changed to periodic was because the first quarter doesn't really show you, it doesn't really show you anything because it's such a big budget and not much has been spent. And so then it was like, okay, you're doing it to meet the policy versus getting real information out of it. So, but then if you have quarterly, then you're going to get the mid-year and then, you know, you get. But also with periodic, theoretically, you can get more than frequent. So I think with a minimum of quarterly would be appropriate. And with policy, you can always change it, so.
First quarter might not give us good information in the first year, but if we can compare first quarters as with coming years, that might give us better information.
I wouldn't mind changing the financial statements to reports too, just because if you had that understanding, like other people might too, so.
So it would be minimum of quarterly financial reports.
Okay.
And I didn't, anyone had any?
Anyone else?
It's on any of the other sections?
I had. Sorry, I had a couple of things and sorry because I wasn't here for the last meeting. But on, and um, D B J, where it says, "All requests for transfers between cost centers as approved during annual budget must be submitted." I just, should that be? I felt like the word "any" was better than the word "all" because. Did you already change it?
Paragraphs, that was taken out.
Oh, okay.
It was in there twice.
Oh, yes, it was originally in there twice, but I was questioning the word "all requests" versus "any request for transfers between cost centers." And only because just from a semantic point, I thought sort of "all requests" makes it sound like, oh, it happens frequently that there are transfers between cost centers versus, if there happens to be a time when we need to transfer and use the word "any" instead of "all."
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that.
All right, and then, sorry, I, this was a couple of days ago. And then D I E. In federal grants, should that read, where does it say federal grants? Federal grants. Should that be as a district that spends above threshold? It says as a district that spends about thresholds required. But that didn't make sense to me. The third bullet point, federal grant audits. So should it be as a district that spends above thresholds required? The district is subject to the single audit act? Okay, above, okay.
I just got it, Michelle and I just got a message from, I remember it came as a text, YouTube apparently is really struggling and we're almost unintelligible.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
No, and I turned my messages off. Is it YouTube or is it us not remembering to? We all may need to take a class in projection. Enunciation, projection.
No, no, so I can hear it on YouTube just fine, so I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know what to do.
Yeah, no, it's fine. We'll try to speak up a little.
All right, yes. Thank you. All right, thank you. And sorry, I had one more. Under DK, it was warrants, I'm just looking at my notes, I wrote warrants approved by school committee? Question mark, should this be or designate? As an operating procedure, the committee shall receive monthly list of bills, warrants for payment from the school department funds. The list will be certified as correct and approved for payment by the school committee. That's the line. So where it said the list will be certified as correct and approved for payment by the school. by the school committee, should that be or designate? Because do we all approve?
No, it's school committee chair or designate.
Okay. All right, that's what I was thinking. So I think just insert chair. That's second paragraph, second sentence. And so, that was all I had.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? Jen, do you want to make a motion?
Now, do I say it with all the corrections or?
Yes.
Yeah, with the changes.
With, yeah, with the.
Nope.
You don't have to say all the changes, but just say.
Yes, just say with the changes.
With the great upon changes. Give me a minute.
There, I'll send you my notes, my notes.
Okay, so I make a motion to propose Hingham Public School policy section D with proposed changes.
Amendments.
Amendments.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So thank you very much, Jen and Liza, for all of your work.
Thank you.
For all of this. Seven point three is to discuss four additional vacation days being added to the central office and principals vacation banks in lieu of vacation days not taken in the 2020-2021 school year and to act as appropriate. Liza, do you want to take this?
Yeah. So it was brought to the attention of the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee that there was an agreement with Paul Austin prior to his departure and select central office and leadership staff that to honor them for their extra COVID work with four additional vacation days added to their vacation bank. We also rewarded other staff members for additional work performed. The administrators association, the teachers received some additional personal days. The administrators association received a small stipend for work they had done in the summer. And so it was brought to my attention that the school committee had approved two times to allow this handful of people to roll over their vacation days. But this request is specifically additional days. I had, when I summarized this, I had not noted that May tenth meeting, May tenth, 2021, we had approved rollover vacation days. But this request is separate. And this reward would go to the John Ferrish, Jamie LaBewa, Suzanne Venice, Susan Diamato, Rick Swanson, Derek Smith, and Mary Eastwood, because those are the principals that are still remaining with us who were here that year. That does not go retroactive to the people who've left the district. So, so that is the proposal that we're finalizing, catching up from when Paul had departed and we lost that transaction during that time. Susan, do you have anything else to add?
The only thing that we had is that, I just want to point out that on the agenda, the way it's worded is incorrect. And I think I brought that to Liza's attention already. It talks about vacation, additional days in lieu of vacation days not taken. That actually had nothing to do with it. It was more of a compensation type of thing. So that's incorrect. And also, I, if we could talk about, and I defer to you always, Liza, on the four days being able to be rolled over, especially since we're so late in the year, the fiscal year right now. That was another question that was brought to my attention by those who would be eligible.
So with my understanding, that these would be going into their vacation bank as opposed to.
Right, but for the four days to be able to be rolled over. Meaning.
Yep.
So if I have four days left, so if I have zero and I get four and I use four, well, I'm done, right? But if I have ten, I can, I'm allowed to roll over ten days, but I get an additional four.
Yeah.
We would like to be able to roll those four days over as well on July first.
That was, that was my understanding, that there would be perpetual rollover.
I just wanted to clarify my thoughts.
Yeah, no, that's, that's my understanding, so.
Pretty close to the end of the year if all of central office took four days. Now, at the end of the year, that might be a little disruptive. I would vote for the rollover.
Okay. All right, so.
So you want to make a motion, Liza?
Okay, so I will make a motion to apply for additional vacation days for perpetual rollover to the vacation bank of John Ferrish, Jamie LaBewa, Suzanne Venice, Susan Diamato, Rick Swanson, Derek Smith, and Mary Eastwood.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. These are added.
Sorry, that took so long.
I know, exactly. Seven point four is to receive a whole homeschool application for a student in grade three for May to June 2022 and to act as appropriate.
Application for the months of May to June, remaining of the school year. It has been reviewed by my office and meets the guidelines set forth by this committee and I recommend approval.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to receive the homeschool application for a student in grade three for May-June 2022 as proposed by, or as recommended by superintendent.
I'll second. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and finally to receive notification of recent resignations or retirements. And there's a list in the packet, so just thank everyone for their service to the Hingham Public Schools. Next is Subcommittee and Project Reports. Do you want to start with Tim?
Um, Special Ed Subcommittee met in April. I think that was actually before our last meeting. So we will be, I was sending out notice this week about an upcoming, the May meeting, which will happen probably next week or the week after. I need to re-address getting dates with people. So that's happening. The, just other like general stuff, I wanted to say that on Friday night is the Hingham Pride Prom, which the Hingham Pride Project is, they're hosting an adult prom as a fundraiser and they're so appreciative of all of the hard work that Hingham Public School staff and teachers and everyone associated with Hingham Public Schools has done to create such a safe place for LGBT plus students, that they're making it half price to any staff members at Hingham Public Schools. So that was a nice thing, thank you, Hingham Pride Project. There's information for that, there's a code to type in, it's on Facebook. People can email me if I don't have the code right in front of me. I can look it up, but I don't remember. And the other fun thing, we have a lot of, Gary talked about a lot of stuff happening this week and this weekend, lots of fun stuff too. So there's the Pride Prom on Friday and on Saturday night, there's the Hef nineteen twenties party, which should be really fun, albeit both. So, and tickets are still available for both parties, both are fundraisers, so.
You can just go to town meeting right in between the two.
Absolutely. Be looking rough at town meeting this year, but.
I think it's at two o'clock.
Yeah. But I definitely wanted to get the, you know, appreciation from the Pride Project to the Hingham Public School staff that they expressed.
Thank you, Jen.
Um, yep, so I attended the Foster School Council meeting on April thirteenth. Policy is meeting this Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. I attended the SNAP board meeting. And just there, SNAP's got some really great things going on right now. They're going to be doing, placing the flags on the veterans on May twenty-first. And they have the annual golf tournament, which is scheduled for June eighth. And then their cocktail party at the South Shore Country Club is June tenth. And that's all I have.
Yes, Middle School School Council was supposed to meet today, but that postponed till May. And for Wellness, we met April thirteenth. We have a lengthy list of recommendations on looking at equity in the athletic department. One.
Sorry.
One, we, we, one of the things that we are looking at is getting more detail on the budget going forward, which I will remind you then is in sync with what we approved today of fiscal management goals in DA. Now, the first item of the committee's intent is to allocate public funding centering equity while achieving the greatest educational returns. So that is in sync with our, what the Wellness Committee has looked at with the athletic department. So we will hopefully meet one more time and then hopefully at our next meeting, we can give you our report. One other part of that, that work with looking at the booster groups and all the supporter groups, the policy Subcommittee is going to review the policy about how these groups report to us and refining that so that it will be easier for everyone to be able to comply with what we're looking at because that, that exercise with the Wellness Subcommittee was to request information so that we could get an understanding of where everybody is today and just the baseline of how groups are keeping track of their fundraising and how they're reporting it. And so that information will help now inform how we can refine the policy and help people comply better going forward. So it is, it's serving the purpose and Gary's expertise is helping us with some of his experiences in the past of going through these changes with groups will help us with getting there. So that's been very helpful the last couple of weeks. So that's all I have.
Yep, I just have Finance Subcommittee meeting coming up on May ninth. That's all I have.
I have a few things. This Thursday, April twenty-eighth, from seven to eight, the Foster School Design Team and the School Building Committee are having an informal forum about the new Foster School that will be held seven to eight PM in the Foster School cafeteria. It's a kind of drop-in, drop-out, but you'll be able to finally see a visual of the proposed interior and exterior of the new school. Yeah, and members of the design team and the School Building Committee will be there to answer questions and give little visual tours. So it should be a great, great evening, just one hour, seven to eight. Freshments will also be served, so we hope folks will stop by, drop in, and take a look at the visuals. On May fifth, Elijah and I were communicating today. If folks can make it, we wanted to schedule a student advisory council and school committee meeting. What do we?
Is it May fifth?
May fifth, it's a Thursday.
But we also are missing about half the replies.
Okay, so four thirty tend to do.
We'll go with that.
We'll go with four thirty, all right. We'll go with four thirty.
We'll have faith in the responsiveness ability of high schoolers.
Perfect. I have the utmost faith. All right, so we'll go with four thirty and we're going to, we'll do it Zoom?
Probably.
I think that seems easier for folks, yes. So I just wanted to get it on the books. If everyone can make it, that would be great, but if you can't, that's, I think, also okay. As long as we have a few members. No. Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you. And then High School Council's meeting this Wednesday. Time change, I think we're meeting at seven to eight thirty versus five. And then the next Metco, we did not have the Metco family meeting in April, but the next one is scheduled for Wednesday, May fourth.
And that's it for me. Great. So the PRS School Council will meet on Monday, May ninth, at two forty-five and their next PTO meeting is Wednesday, May eleventh, at eight thirty in the cafeteria. And also there's, you might be aware, there's an election coming up on the fourteenth. And so we've scheduled an orientation for new school committee members on May sixteenth, which is a Monday, at one thirty. Unfortunately, all the candidates are able to make it, so.
So the Climate Action Planning Committee met on April sixth. We, the new vendor, Energids, you know, presented, you know, the proposal. So there's a lot of discussion around, you know, continue reaching out to the different departments to find, you know, the climate planning efforts. And then, you know, obviously the community will be engaged and its survey may be going out soon. On Friday, the twenty-ninth, the Climate Action Planning Committee will be participating on the Cohasset Echo Fest to highlight some of the sustainability programs going forward. This Wednesday is my last meeting of the South Shore Elementary, South Shore, South School Council. And they are continuing working on the mid-year improvement goals.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we have other items that may not reasonably be known within forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything? No, okay. And in that case, I will take a motion to adjourn.
And I will make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.